And and back or if you're just ready to get started. Any questions, thoughts? Go ahead, Dennis.
Thank you, Jonathan. Welcome back. This is just one thing. I guess what I'd like to have more information on as we work through this. I do note that staff put an asterisk by those that were maybe require additional funding. Just to inform us of what that might mean and what the kind of magnitude that might be. I think it would be good for the city manager as we get to those items, give us just a brief idea of what we're talking about there. Because there's a big difference between $20,000 and $200,000 or $2 million. So I just want to get a sense of magnitude. Thank you, Jonathan.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, we'll do that on. So let's, let's start with, with the questions that in your review of, of the, of the updated work plan that incorporated the discussions that, that we had on the eighth of, of December. Were there questions, comments about the descriptions of any of these either high, medium or, or low priority ones that just to clarify? Any questions before we start to then kind of work through the, through those for, for the topics? And Dennis, well, I think that's a good suggestion that we'll ask about the order of magnitude of additional funding that's required as we work through those specific items. Anything there for, for broader discussion or the questions about the description or the, um, the timing or the, the level of effort there?
I'm Jonathan. Councilmember Fahey has her hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, thank you. Please.
Thank you. Thanks, Jonathan. My one question is on item number four, the city's sustainability issues. And it only specifies analysis of energy efficiencies. For the city facilities, I thought we were also including the implementation of some corrections to make the facilities more efficient using that 600,000 that we budgeted for sustainable sustainability items. So I'd like it to be more, a little bit more in depth about what that money is used for and not just for finding out what we can do, but actually doing it.
Yes, thanks. Thanks, Deb. I appreciate that comment. Yeah, we can say analysis and implementation. So that's clearly, that's the idea is that we'll do that initial analysis, kind of design, understanding whether it's HVAC or what at the facilities would, would be a good use of that $600,000. So the, the, the goal is to implement those improvements. So I, Megan, I don't know if you want to add anything or Kurt?
No, I think that's great feedback. I think our intent is to, is to do the analysis, bring it to city council for discussion and direction about how to proceed and then move forward with implementation. So we can certainly clarify that.
Okay, well, my other question in clarifying that is also to, we don't have to do the analysis of every city facility before we can start implementing things on one specific facility. So I would, my preference would be to do an analysis on one building and then make those corrections and then move on to the next building.
Yeah, I think our current goals right now are to work through the Excel audit program and our own internal staff audit. And then get a prioritized list that gives you the best value for that money. And then we'll start working through those improvements as quick as we can, regardless of which facility it is.
Okay, but you're going to do the analysis on every building before you start on any implementing on any one?
Yeah, I think we're going to do some high level walkthroughs, you know, look at the lighting, look at the HVAC systems, look at the building envelopes and just see where the, you know, where can you spend money and get the most return on that investment?
Okay, well.
Is there something you'd like us to do faster? Maybe I'm misinterpreting.
Yeah, it sounds, it sounds like there's a sort of real desire for implementation, obviously, and sort of being and moving quicker. And I think Kurt's talking about the approach is to look at a sort of at a sketch level or conceptual level to, to be able to put the, the improvements in, in context, if I'm understanding that correctly. So Deb, other thoughts on that?
No, not at this time, but I, I would just really encourage implementing the changes that would have an impact as soon as possible and not just studying it, but actually doing it.
Absolutely. I think we're good at executing, getting projects done. My only thing I would throw out there is I'm about to go through a facilities manager transition in quarter one. And so I've need to get my new board to be able to do that journey with them and have them totally bought in. So it's probably a Q two thing for us for facilities. And then we'll move fast after that.
Okay. Um, there are a couple of hands up, Jeff and Dennis. Where we are now is that we've already sort of talked, started talking about the, you know, sort of the, the specific elements themselves. And we'll get to the prioritization. Where I'd like us to focus just for the moment, are there questions about the descriptions or questions sort of related to what we have? And then, then we'll move through in batches, high, medium and low priority. So, so Jeff, um, good evening.
Yeah, hi. I did, I just wanted to support what Deb was saying on the energy audits and the implementation. I first I wanted to point out that the Rex Center was built to a LEED's gold standard and just opened up less than two years ago. So, you know, I, I would personally look at some of the older facilities and where there is low hanging fruit, including, you know, lighting and, you know, some things that are very obvious with high returns that we should just, you know, get into implementation and not spend most of the year just studying. So I'm hoping that there's, you know, and Kurt, I know you are, you will do that because you're very action oriented. So I'm just hoping we can actually do some things this year. $600,000 doesn't go a long way for these kind of projects. So I think we just need to kind of, you know, pick the obvious ones and get, get on with it. Thanks.
Maybe study is a five letter word and we just should say, we're going to do some walkthroughs.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah. Well, yeah. So, so again, Jeff and, you know, just reiterating sort of the, the desire for implementation and focus on in, in what I heard here a little different is, is prioritization of the older facilities, you know, in terms of move forward with, with those as quick as possible. So, um, Dennis, your hands up.
Thank you, Jonathan. I, I just have a couple of areas I have, I'm looking for some clarification from staff. So on item number seven, community design, the Old Town Overlay Zone District. You know, that does not have an asterisk by it. And it seems to me that we may need consultants and process around that. So I'm just curious what staff is thinking there or do we need that or not? And I sort of make sure that's part of the.
Yeah, we do need a consultant for that. And that is in the approved budget for 2021. So why we didn't add the asterisk because it's already been assigned budget.
Okay, excellent clarification. Thank you, Rob. Item number 10, the implementation of the plastic bag tax. I think that needs to be in the top priority because we have a voter mandate to implement that for 2022. So I wouldn't say it's medium in priority. It's something that's a mandate really. So I would move that up into the highest category. That's my comments. Thank you, Jonathan.
Okay, and Dennis, we're gonna, we're gonna come back to that. Let's not have a discussion about of sort of where plastic bag tax fits in right now. But we'll, we'll come back to that in, in just a little bit. Jeff and Chris with clarifying questions about or about what's described here and about what, what you've been able to review. Jeff, go ahead.
Well, I'm on item six, the airport noise mitigation efforts.
Okay.
And the title's fine. I just don't think we should have the last two bullets in that section. I mean, we're, we're not going to do outreach to the pilots and we don't have the ability to do analysis. We're going to do that through the round table and with the other communities.
So from staff perspective, sort of the, the role of the pilot and the outreach and the analysis is that is sort of your assumption, Jeff? Is that that's part of the roundtable discussions and that would be part of that?
Yeah, I think that has to be done regionally and it's got to be with the other jurisdictions through the round. Personally, I think the round table is the best forum to do that. I anticipate our staff is going to be doing that.
What's the assumption Heather, Megan, others you have on, on this one around the piloting and the analysis of the operations?
Yeah, I, I think that's correct. I think we were, we were getting detailed, but I don't know if Megan, Megan or Emily want to add anything. But certainly the round table will take the lead.
Yeah, I think it's, you know, I think we, we anticipated there may be some potential for us to, you know, do some of our own analysis to bring that information to the round table, not fully understanding what, um, you know, data they might have. And we haven't always gotten comprehensive data around the noise impacts. And so I think that's sort of where we were going with that. But I think obviously we know more about the round table. Councilmember Lipton, since we've had, you know, that first meeting. And so I, I think it makes sense to, to take those off and just focus on those efforts there.
Okay. Um, Chris, your, your hands up.
Excuse me.
You're on mute.
I had a question on 13. And I, more to say about this later, but on, on this one, does this, is this one going to need money to be provided to get any kind of support, public process, support or consultant support? That's a question for staff.
So my, my, my thought is that, I mean, I think we and Rob or Megan jumping here that we would work with our neighboring municipalities and, and counties and Boulder County Housing Authority and look at what's out there. I'm not sure we, we, I think we thought staff could, could do this work. Obviously there'll be some legal work and engagement as well as part of our typical work that we do throughout the year. But Rob or Megan, if you want to add anything?
Yeah, I think that's exactly right. I think we were envisioning if we're just focusing on an inclusionary zoning ordinance that working with the housing authority, working with the city attorney would be enough resources just for that one focused project. Now, if we do something beyond that, which I think is number 15, you know, depending on the scope that council wants, that may or may not need resources.
Got it.
Mayor, I think your actual hands up.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to weigh in on this one that Councilmember Lay brought up. I was one of the people supporting putting this on the work plan. And I think this is one of those things that we could over complicate if we wanted to, but we don't have to. So we're the only community around us that doesn't have this already. Superior adopted one in like one week's time last year. So I think if we look at, you know, what we're missing compared to the municipalities around us, we can make our code more contemporary and then have the bigger discussion that you're talking about under the other bullet. Like this is really just bringing us up to contemporary standards with all of our neighbors so that we're not the only people in Boulder County that don't have this, um, which is really a loophole and causes, you know, a loss for our whole community. So I think we can make this hard if we wanted to, but we don't have to. And I would encourage us not to make it hard.
So by not making it hard, is it keeping it as, as is?
Just like it is, just like, yeah.
Okay. Other Kyle, um, go ahead. Your box is eliminated in my, my screen. I'm looking at.
Oh, I didn't mean to eliminate my box, but thank you, Jonathan, for, I'll just echo my support for leaving 13 on and, and trying to make that as, as streamlined the process as possible. To the mayor's point, I think there's good models out there in our community, in, in our surrounding communities that we can utilize. So.
Okay. And then Caleb, I think, any, any thoughts, questions before we get, jump into working through the priorities?
Zero, zero thoughts.
Those blue glasses, great. All right. Well, let's, let's start at the top unless there's another idea here. So I, my thought is that we've moved through questions about each of the four proposed high priority, the ones that are in green. I believe Heather, you wanted to kind of talk a bit about the COVID-19 response and, and recovery and sort of how, how you're looking at those bullets that underneath, undergird the, undergird this work plan item.
Yeah, thanks. And, and probably to address some of Dennis's comments too about what the asterisks mean. I mean, I think on this one, we, we really don't know. So I think we do have some, the senior mail site just talked to Megan about this. We think this is maybe 70,000 community recovery and needs. We're bringing some information back about that at the next, next meeting or the meeting after that. And so that's maybe 25 to 50,000 range budget review and adjustments. We've, we've been pretty good at tracking with our current estimates, but again, not really sure what the first quarter and second quarter will look like. Economic recovery plan, um, business assistance, you know, we're, we're doing a $500,000 program right now. So I don't know what will be needed. So, and then some of those, I think the point there is that some of those items there in consideration of ordinance limiting restaurant delivery fees, 2021 Main Street Plan, et cetera. We're not sure what that'll tell. Those are some possible suggestions. But it could be other things as well in terms of economic recovery, public health orders, again, not sure what that means. If I have an opportunity to assist in vaccine distribution and what that may require. And then recovery and operations, that's probably more internal. But so, um, it's, it's pretty wide open and lots of unknowns there. But that's what we're thinking about right now, based on what we know currently.
So when we were talking, I think you, you know, the, the, what, what I have in my notes is, 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 is fluid and that it's fluid based on, you know, sort of a broader, and so the, the asterisk that itself and the sort of the magnitude of the cost. You know, how is given, given what you've just talked about and the fluidity of it, is, is there a sense of sort of low, medium, high in terms of the, you know, the additional funding or professional services there or just, or we just don't know?
So, you know, I think based on feedback we've gotten from council, certainly the senior mail site and the community recovery conversation that we had are certainly priorities and something that we'll be working on and bringing back to you shortly. Again, budget review and adjustments are continual, always looking at business assistance and what that means, especially as we look at restrictions and how those either get, become more restrictive or less over time. Public health orders, not, not sure what that'll look like in the future and what that may require from the city. And then, you know, just recovery in general, what that looks like, a lot of unknowns there. So, um, but clearly this is a priority for the city and, and regardless of what other priorities may be high, this will likely trump everything else. Depending on, on, on what, what the next six months look like. So.
Yeah, thanks. Chris, your hands up.
Yeah, you know, as I was looking at that, it struck me that maybe should raise this before. Would the, the, the bullet under economic recovery plan, business assistance be better put in the economic vitality strategic plan implementation? It's, you know, I, I understand that the strategic plan is a little more, you know, is, is more general. I do get that, but I, I wonder if, you know, if the, if that isn't part and parcel of, of that piece for us at least this year. You know, there's, there's business assistance that's already redundant in there. So I, I guess I'd look to you guys for some thoughts about whether that makes sense to have it in both or, or not.
Yeah, I think we pulled it. I think the, the thought is under recovery. It's about business assistance. I think the economic strategic plan implementation, which is next, includes the, you know, businesses, specific parts of the strategic plan that aren't necessarily COVID related specifically, you know, priority properties, an area for attraction, cost of doing business work hard, those kinds of things versus the, the recovery piece which we have under COVID. So that's, that's kind of what we were thinking. I don't know, Megan, if you want to add anything?
Go ahead, Megan.
Sure, thank you. Um, so this is, this, I would see these as separate. So this is the formal review of our existing incentive program. And there are a couple more items within the strategic plan tied to it in terms of types of things we might want to specifically incentivize related to retention and attraction. So I personally would keep those as, as separate initiatives so that we have our formal business assistance plan, business assistance program discussion, which would start with the EBC and then come up to council for discussion. And that we would discuss separate priorities for business support and recovery as part of the first program.
Yeah, that, that makes sense to me.
More on the COVID response and, and recovery. Okay, economic vitality, strategic plan implementation, high, you know, I'll just note that all of the high priorities, as you will have seen, have high staff impacts and, you know, sort of, as well as significant council time. So this one is Q two through Q four, for council meetings, three to four economic vitality committee meetings, discussion as it relates to that. That was helpful distinction. Megan, in terms of sort of as a, as a intro to this item. Yeah, go ahead, Caleb. And then, and then Mayor.
Good. Yeah, so I was, um, I think that was a good conversation to start, Chris, about, you know, where these things sit. And I, I think I agree with where we ended on, you know, the economic vitality strategic plan implementation. It's a mouthful. It's certainly about, I think, you know, the, the longer scope projects that we had envisioned. But it is obviously unavoidably intertwined with the economic crisis right now, which is your time with COVID and all that. But if the asterisk on here for additional funding, Heather, does that include additional staff? Or I think you went through and I apologize if you already explained this one well enough, but I wasn't paying close enough attention if you did.
No, no, I didn't. Um, yeah, I think that, that does. I mean, we've talked about that in the past. I think recognizing that the item before it, the COVID response and recovery wasn't on the plan. And so, and the strategic plan implementation for economic vitality is a significant effort on its own. I think there, you know, we're, we're looking at additional staffing. We're also looking at, are there certain things that we can do that are in the strategic plan that might, could utilize some professional services that can get that done quickly and be responsive. So I, Megan Pierce, if you want to add anything, but that's, that's kind of, and that could, that could be an expensive effort and certainly an additional staff person will, will have a, have a cost. So that's a, that's a good chunk of resources.
Megan Pierce, anything to add?
No, nothing further. Thank you.
Mayor?
Thank you. Yeah. I just wanted to sort of frame how I was thinking about the meeting tonight. We're really here to discuss with each other if the priority levels are right. We've done a lot of good work coming up with these initiatives, taking input from the constituents to try to make sure we put forward the best. And, you know, the things that we can. And then the prioritization is really important because we can only work on so many things at a time. And so we need to understand what's highest priority, what's media, medium priority and what's lowest. And I understand it's very painful to see things that are so important listed as less important because every single thing on this list is incredibly important to each of us and to someone in the community. And there's a reason it's on here, but I think the staff have done a good job laying out a reasonable number of highest priority, medium priority and lower priority projects. And I'm supportive of the way it's drafted. So I, I probably won't, I mean, unless somebody says something that sparks thoughts, you know, and there's good conversation to be had, I'm happy and, and thankful for the work the staff have done in prioritizing them and can support the document that they brought forward. And then take to Mayor Proton Maloney's point about funding. I think it's an excellent point. And I think we need staff. I, I think on a lot of them, it's going to be exactly what city manager bolster said on the first one that we don't know at this point what the cost is. So I think a good first meeting on the topic is after staffs had a little time to do some investigation, come, come to council with a little bit of investigation and the cost estimate on. All right, we've looked into this a little bit and this is what we think it'll cost to move forward and continue the project. And then we can discuss the cost and figure out if we should continue on.
Okay, good. Um, more on, more on economic vitality, strategic plan invitation and implementation. And Mayor, thanks for the, the notion of and support for the sort of the information and the, the way in which the, the work plan has been updated with council input by staff and sort of how, how it's laid out. And, you know, I, I suppose that's a thing which is, let's have, let's have a conversation about the things that we need to. Our task here tonight is, is prioritization. And it is hard to kind of see items that, that, that are near and dear to your heart, maybe not in the high priority or, or otherwise. And I think that, that's, you know, that's a reality of, of you as, as, as leaders of Louisville sort of having to make choices about what you do because you can't do it all. And so, um, so the next ones, we have equity, diversity and inclusion. And then city sustainability issues. And we've already talked a little bit about, about that one. Is there more that we want to talk about in terms of the high priority and the way it's the, the timeframe, the level of effort? Or, or any of that? Go ahead, Chris.
I think this, maybe this is a discussion that's premature for tonight, maybe a better one for next week. But I think there's, there's some question certainly that, I mean, Councilman Brown can speak for himself, but I think we, both Councilman Brown and I relating to the equity diversion and inclusion matter have, you know, hoped and do hope that we can minimize to the extent possible the impact to staff, knowing that that's a high priority. I mean, and there are things that staff's going to have to do. And I think we recognize that. But I, I'm not sure. I guess we can talk next week about that a bit, but I, I think, uh, because we, we're going to be talking about the proposal. But I think that one may be one that, that, you know, it's, it's a little, it's a little bit variable. And I'm not sure that to say it's high impact, especially compared to some of these other ones is necessarily the case. You know, Sim Ang Bollinger, can you, you know, just touch on that?
Sure. I think, um, so right, we're bringing some materials next week for discussion with city council. I think recognizing the desire for the timeframe and the complexity and, um, you know, the engagement, I think, as well with the community. I think we're gonna, this is a high impact and, and appropriately so. And so we're going to need to have everyone engaged in this conversation. So I think that's why we put high. I think we were thinking in terms of a facilitator potentially for external 25 to 50, but we'll also be doing some internal work that we'll probably need some additional resources for as well. So maybe around in the same range. Megan Davis, I don't know if you want to comment, but that's, that's kind of what I'm thinking right now.
Yeah, I, I agree. Heather, I think that sounds reasonable. And just, just one note I should have mentioned at the beginning is the final version of the work plan. We, we remove the staff level of effort piece. It's really just for us to kind of have these discussions to understand how we're going to fit all this in, in the course of a year. And then in the, the, the final copy, we'll, we'll remove that and, and you will see a new column with alignment with the strategic plan. So that's just to say that yes, Councilmember Lay, that this could, could end up being adjusted, you know, depending. But also as Heather said, just, just based on what we know now and what we anticipate for the work, we, we included high as our estimate.
Kyle, did you want to weigh in on that? Councilmember Lay mentioned your, your discussion. Anything do you want to add on that?
No, I, I agree with Councilmember Lay. Thank you for taking the lead on that, Councilmember. I, I would agree that we're, that our goal has been to try to minimize staff time. I realize, um, you know, I'm sensitive to what the, the city manager indicated. I mean, that there will be some staff time involved. But we are, we are, I think the, for now, I think it's, it's just appropriate to. But we are, we are, I think the, for now, I think it's it's just appropriate to have this on the the work plan to say that it is a very high priority for us. And then to to have a fuller discussion about sort of the structure and the nature of it next week.
All right, ready to move on to medium priorities?
Well, I think we'll just take a quick moment to take public comment at this point so we don't get through everything before we hear from the public. So if any members of the public care to comment on this agenda item this evening, which is our only agenda item this evening, this is your time to provide comments for us. So go ahead and raise your hand by clicking the raise hand button at the bottom of your panel. Or if you've dialed in by phone, you can dial star nine and a raised handle if you're on your behalf. Our first commenter is Rick Crone.
Thank you, Mayor. Rick Crone, 746 West for Court in Louisville. And I'm president of the Downtown Business Association. First one comment, I was glad to see the 2021 Main Street Plan as part of the COVID Response High Priority. And it also looked like it probably ought to be part of the Economic Vitality Strategic Plan Implementation, since those are two separate items, according to the discussion you just had. One of the things I was wondering about is that the next last item on page 20 is an economic development discussion concerning a council added item on the Main Street closure, permanent seasonal, next step by March. Should 2021 be like 2020 and need an engagement strategy? I think we all, I think from downtown's perspective, we agree that that study is needed, the engagement strategy is needed. We need to figure out what we're doing. I just didn't know whether that was included or subsumed as either part of the number one or number two item in the high priority items. So I just wanted to make sure that that those thoughts didn't get lost during the conversation. Next on item number 14, which is not a high priority item, and I don't know whether that's in order at this point. I think you need to have a thorough discussion of the sustainability building code and particularly how it affects older commercial structures, because they will tend to be quite expensive to retrofit for a number of items. And so I think you need to make sure that you've really done the study on those. Also, improving the design guidelines, item number 17 in that list, is also important for existing buildings. I think so far we've had, especially in the last couple of years, real questions about how the design guidelines would be implemented. And I absolutely agree that council ought to be addressing that. And I do also agree with the priority on that being a secondary item. In the proposed items, I noticed number 14, the Front Street Plaza improvements with a holistic conversation. I agree that's needed, especially with both the DBA and the Front Street businesses. And thank you very much. Those are all the comments I've got at this time.
Thank you. So seeing no other members of the public wishing to comment this evening, that takes us back to council for concluding our discussion.
Great. We'll move on to the medium priorities in terms of. And so we've already had conversation about some clarifications around the airport noise mitigation efforts. Question about the the overlay of overlay, old town overlay and sort of the level, level of effort. And it's beyond the sort of that this is part of the approved 2021 budget and and the plastic bag tax. And let's stop there. So that's sort of five through 10. Further discussion related to to those medium prioritized level or medium prioritized work plan items. Go ahead, Chris.
Yeah, my my question was. I mean, aren't there, are we looking at five through 14 or?
We are. I'm just chugging them up a little bit, just so just for the purposes here of of discussion. So five through 10, it sounds like you have some for 11 through 14. Well, discussion further about moving implementation of the bag tax, a plastic bag tax as a sort of requirement up to a high priority. I believe that that was, that's a point of discussion for for the council. Dennis, do you want, Caleb, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I mean, I I agree. I don't know, Dennis, if it matters what priority it is, since it has to be done. It's one of those, like, it's almost a white, in my opinion. It has to be done, but obviously we want to schedule it, plan it and understand how much time it's going to take. So I agree with you that it's green in the sense that it has to happen. But it's also, in my opinion, sort of white in that it it's going to happen regardless of what we, how we prioritize it, correct?
May I jump in, Jonathan? I well, I agree. All I was pointing out is we have to do this, right? It's it's mandated by a vote last year. So whether it's in the green or the white, it just doesn't belong where it is right now. That's all I was really saying. But it is something we have to do this year. So.
So is the suggestion to move it into the into the white, the recurring obligated, obligate is sort of, you're obligated to do that? Is that?
Well, well, it's not recurring. It's it's a one time. We have to set the ordinance around this. So probably needs to be in green.
Megan and and Heather, you want to thoughts on that?
Yeah, I guess that's fine. I I think, again, we're trying, you can't, you can't have everything in green. So recognizing that there are some things that are required there, but also, I guess, just recognizing that some things will have maybe, again, I don't know if priority is the right word or or more focus, maybe. But so just an attempt to recognize we can't just have lots of things in green. So whatever you all feel appropriate, we can, we can make that work.
Is there, is there an agreement, Heather, is that accurate? That that this is something that has to be done regardless? And so is is that inaccurate? Is that accurate in your mind?
Yeah, there's definitely some things we have, right, as it relates to that, we have to implement it. There's could be things that change how that's implemented, depending on legislation and other things and level of effort. But yes, absolutely. So, yep.
Okay. I'm looking around at council members. Okay. A lot, anything you want to say in terms of the asterisks? We've already talked about the airport noise mitigation efforts. Let's go 11 through 14, the the last four medium priority topics. So online sales tax, hike calculations, affordable housing. We've already had a kind of a a discussion about that. Sustainability additions to building code. Go ahead, Caleb.
I would say. Excuse me. If we're trying to figure out, you know, exact order, my understanding is that the orange is all random right now, all medium importance, but not ordered.
That's correct. That's correct. Yep.
So, you know, it would, it would seem to me that it's important for me to say that the Old Town Overlay is less important than the bag tax, for instance, is less important than the transportation master plan, which it's below already. But you know, that probably less important than the state collection. So if we're trying to order them, I'm not saying, we're all, we do this every time. I'm not saying that the Old Town Overlay zone district work isn't important. But I would, I would put almost everything else in orange above it. So I don't know how other people feel about.
So Caleb, you're not, we're not attempting to prioritize those items within categories. We're not.
Okay.
They just happen to line up that way.
Okay.
But I think your point, given that, though, and your point noted that in terms of the, you know, sort of where you see that, that at work plan item, it's sort of, it's it's valid. But I I do think that is a very different discussion if we're trying to prioritize within the, within the categories. I don't think we had anticipated that.
Okay, sorry, apologies.
That's okay. Chris, go ahead. Chris, you have your hand up.
There we go. Sorry. I and I'm I'm realizing bouncing back a little bit. Is, in fact, the the Louisville Superior Library Services and IGA a medium priority or is it lower than that? I mean, I'm, I am also looking for ways of moving some of them around and whatnot. And, you know, that's something, we have to do that every so often, right? I I mean, is this a white item? For example, or?
In your mind, are you advocating for for moving this?
Well, I I just don't know whether, I mean, to me, it's not as important as quite a number of those other things. But I I don't know whether others agree.
So, Megan, I would just say it's not necessarily a recurring item in the sense that we revisit the IGA every set number of years. It's, it's really been, you know, called up for further discussion by the Joint Issues Committee. So I think that would be my comment of, you know, why it doesn't necessarily fit in that, in that section of as a recurring item.
Or were you suggesting to move it to the low priority, Chris?
I I was suggesting we might consider doing it, reducing it. But I I see the mayor has her hand up, and she may have some additional thoughts that were pretty important.
Go ahead, go ahead, Mayor.
Yeah, I was just going to add on this one. So like, there are things like update from RTD directors or like the school board wants to meet with us that aren't on our work plan. Those are just things that happen. And and so this one is on here because the town of Superior has asked us to consider this, and it's important to them. We, I think we would say this is not a priority. You know, we would rather not have this conversation, but the Joint Issues Committee is working through the details and they'll bring us the information on the discussion that Superior would like to have with us at this time. So, I mean, I think we can move it, but it's similar, I I think we can move it, but to low, to media. But this is one of those things that it's, we have an IGA, we have a partnership, and our partner wants to have a discussion with us.
Okay. Kyle, Kyle, and then and then Deb, and then I'll come back to you, Chris.
Yeah, thanks, Jonathan. I I was just going to concur, basically, the mayor beat me to it. But I I think this is really, to her point, this is really the being forced by the the city of Superior or the town of Superior, excuse me. But and, you know, it's, and we want to be good partners, but it is. You know, it it remains to be seen exactly what that renewed IGA and agreements would look like. And if and if we would even agree to their new terms, they have a pretty good deal right now. Quite frankly, we're giving them a very good deal. And so, you know, if they want to reopen it, then then then, you know, I think a lot of things will be on the table. So.
So that's sort of argument for keep it, keep it where it is, or, you know?
Actually, I I was going to agree that, like, moving it lower is fine with me. I think it will happen, and I think it will become a part of the work of the Joint Issues Committee, obviously. And we will bring that, we will bring forward our discussions and potentially recommendations. But I don't, I don't know that it, and I think, I think it will take some, it will clearly take some staff time because, you know, it's a, it's a new agreement. If we go forward with a new agreement. They may decide that after meeting with us that they don't want to. But there have been certain members of their Board of Trustees that have been unhappy with the current terms. So.
Deb, please.
Thanks. Yeah, I I kind of agree with that this isn't definitely a high priority item. But I I do think it's at least a medium. And the reason is not just because of the IGA, but also because of the importance of maintaining a good neighborhood relationship so that we have that relationship when we start discussing other issues like the airport noise, where we have to cooperate with them on that. So I would, I would argue to keep it where it is and not move it to a lesser priority.
Because by moving it to a low priority, it means less of a, in your mind, a sort of a commitment to that partnership or the neighborhood relationship? Is that sort of if I'm understanding that, Deb?
Exactly.
Okay. Well, what do you want to do? What 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 do folks want to do with this? The, it's a, it's it's a, and sort of as as has been mentioned, it's an issue that's been pressed with by Superior. There's going to be time associated with that, the relationship with with. So whether you have it in a low priority or keep it here at the medium, medium priority, it sounds like that's that's work that's going to get done, is going to happen. So what, in a couple of you want to move to low? And Deb, you're suggesting that we keep it at, keep it as as is. So what do you, folks, what do you want to do with that?
Me, it's fine to leave where it is. I I I'm convinced that of the comments that that folks have made about being a good neighbor and there's no, there's no downside at this point to 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 moving it. There's no real huge upside.
Yeah. Okay, folks, okay with that? Moving forward, anything more on 11, 11 through 14 then? Talked already about affordable housing. Anything with the the sustainability additions, the asterisks there in terms of additional, just magnitude of funding, additional funding that would be required on that? Heather or Megan Davis?
Uh, Megan or Rob, do you want to? I'm not as sure on on this one. I think we were assuming there might be some professional services that might be needed. But if anyone.
Yeah, I think we were thinking professional services potentially for this. And then we have also had some discussions for, with the possibility of a a grant where we could get some assistance to do some of this work, and that would require match funding. So we're still kind of exploring what the options are and would be in that area.
Rob, do you have anything going down on that? No?
Oh, sorry about that. No, I don't have anything to add to what Megan said. I think that's correct. I think it depends on the scope a little bit of what we tackle and whether this grant is something that works out as well.
Go ahead, Chris.
Yeah, I I actually do have one on affordable housing. And this has been an area that I've been very involved in, and I'm glad that we've included it. It's a medium priority, because I don't know that we've, I'm not sure we've done that before. But I I think it's good that that we've got it there. I I have a question. And it is as much the face two piece. I I'm, I I heard what the mayor said and what Councilman Brown echoed about inclusionary zoning. I, I don't know how much impact, to be honest, that's going to have in Louisville. Because we're, we're so, you know, we've built out so much already. I I think there are, you know, we have, we've really put off discussions around some of the other tools that are available, including, for example, buying or or, you know, selling property to the extent we have any to BCHA to be able to develop some units of affordable housing. There's, there's a variety of other tools that that aren't inclusionary zoning. I realize that other communities around us do it. I believe that there was sort of a battle royal about it a few years ago. That doesn't by any means constrain us, and I certainly wouldn't rest on that. But I, I'm, I know that the idea of like, well, looking at a whole bunch of other tools is going to get us off track or or it's going to create a lot of work for staff. But I wonder whether we're really putting our, you know, our eggs in the right basket, whether we, you know, whether it would be good to to spend time having staff look at a couple of options. look at a couple of options that we could come up with, rather than just making a, you know, a, a change to the, to the ordinance, to do something everybody else does and for it not, you know, and to call it good. I just, I don't know, I'm, I'm a little, it's not that I, I think inclusionary zoning is really a horrible thing. It's just, I don't know that it's the most important, you know, priority among the affordable housing options that we have to try to meet our goals that we've all signed on to.
Yeah. Yeah, I just, so Councilmember Lay, you know that looking at all the other options is on the work plan also. And so I'm not, I don't totally understand your comments. I mean, I think this is saying, hey, this is something that we could do. I understand your point. You're saying that you don't think it's going to have any impact. I disagree with you, and that's fine. We can have a difference of opinion. But it's, it's something that doesn't take much time for us to do. And I don't understand, like, we're just going to not do something so we can study things over here till the end of time and have nothing in place? Like, we're constantly being brought housing developments. And if we have this on the books, it makes a big difference to those people, like, to anybody that can live in a home, that right now can't live in a home. So, I mean, I, I just feel like this is getting something done expediently while we study everything like you want to. We, we still have to study everything on there.
And so that's number 15. So 13 and 15 in the, you know, that's phase two in terms of the consideration of other affordable housing tools and options, Chris.
Yeah, I mean, I, I know it's on there, Mayor. I, I get that. But they're on different categories. It's very clear what one is.
I support moving up 15 to orange, if that's your point. But I don't understand why we're going to kick off good work that we could do in literally one council meeting that'll take Rob. I mean, I, I don't want to speak for Rob, but it shouldn't take that much effort to be able to implement what Superior, Lafayette, Boulder. I mean, it, it won't take that much time.
I, I would put 15 up in the orange. That's fine. I mean, I, I'm not sure how much support there's going to be for trading those. I, I would say that there's, you know, there, there's certainly. Well, yeah, that's fine. Can we move 15 up? To orange or turn it orange?
A couple shaking heads. Jeff, Deb, others, Dennis, Caleb? Yeah, you know, just to note that we moved one additional one into, to a high priority as well as one into a, the medium priority as well. So we'll have, we'll do that. So move number 15 into the medium priority. Moving on to the low priority items, which now are, you know, 16 through 19. There is one asterisk on the design guideline updates in terms of additional professional services and/or resources. What are staff could, could comment on the magnitude there, what's, what's envisioned?
Sure. So I think what we're envisioning, excuse me, is that we would, we would like to have a design professional assist on trying to get that to the finish line. So I think we're envisioning something in the, in the range of about $30,000. The original project was almost $90,000 in consulting fees. And we, we ran into some issues. So again, I think we need somebody who can really work on graphics on staff's behalf. And then staff would try to be the lead on drafting. So I'm thinking something in the range of 30,000.
Thank you. Are there other questions or observations about the way in which staff has characterized either the level of effort or the timing or these low priority items, 16 through 19? Moving on then, any, any further comment about any of the, the white, the ongoing reoccurring items there? Is there anything that, that you want to add or discuss on that one? I don't believe that there's any asterix, additional resources that are expected? No? Dennis, please.
I just had a clarification from staff on page 11 is the ward redistricting. What will be the timeframe that we would need to accomplish that task?
So I think we actually just talked to Kathleen about this. I think the plan is to bring something back in first quarter. And I can't, I'm trying to, let me see the timing, what we had here.
Okay. Early in the year.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay. Other, other thoughts, comments on the reoccurring items, questions? Well, it sounds like you're there in terms of, and, and there are two changes that were suggested, bringing the implementation of the bag, plastic bag tag, bag tax up to a high priority. And then number 15, affordable housing phase two into the medium priority there. So nice job, really quickly done. And I'm sort of looking around, around and wondering, Heather, what it, would, do you want to talk a little bit about what it means to, in terms of, you, you've already talked about this and somewhat about what it means to have in your area of focus of, on the high and the medium and the low priorities? Kind of what that means from, from your perspective as, as the city manager and those priorities?
Sure. You know, obviously, the, the higher, the, the high priority and what we'll spend a lot of our time on. You know, I think in the past, we've really tried to get to the low items too. I just, there's a lot of variability and fluidity on some of these high priorities. And so we'll do our best again. But I think even some in the medium potentially, depending on time and staffing, as we always do, we'll do our best, but we'll, it, it's going to be more of a challenge just having the COVID response when there's just so much uncertainty around that. But appreciate this feedback. It's very helpful. And the next steps would be, we'll take, make these changes and then send it out to you so you can all see the final version. And then we'll populate that into the advanced agenda. Try to get some of that done, or we're going to miss Meredith. So we'll figure out when that, when, when we'll get that done. But, um, so that, that'll, that'll be the next step. And throughout the year, based on the timing, and then we'll get to work on these issues. So appreciate all your feedback.
Yeah. Yeah. And I guess I just recognize that one, that, you know, this is my second year doing this with you, work plan, plan development and prioritization. And, you know, what it takes to, to get to this kind of smooth effort is a lot of the work that's, that Heather and your team have been doing to help to, to kind of create the clarity. And for you as council members, is your deliberation and discussion productive? And, and so just want to, just to acknowledge, acknowledge that. And, and thank you for, for having me be a part of this again. So thanks a lot.
All right. Thanks, everyone, and look forward to seeing you all next week at council. We are adjourned.